With Liberty and Justice for all. Please silence all your electronic devices. My name is Todd Groden. For those of you that are taking government class, I'm the trustee, that's the senior trustee. In the absence of the president not being here and the vice president not being here. Don't worry, they'll be back. Uh, right now I have the helm. So, for those of you taking government class, this is what you want to do. Todd Groden is a trustee that's running it and you will be having it signed by any board member at the end of the meeting. It is seven thirty-one, we now have. Make a motion, take a motion for bring the agenda to table. Ms. LaRusso, second by. Mr. Stalter.
You're asking any additions, deletions, or corrections?
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Uh. Any additions, deletions, corrections to agenda?
There are none at this time, Mr. President.
Thank you. Um. Take a motion for adoption of agenda? By Mr. Fluhm. Second by, Mr. Stalter, thank you. Uh, approval of draft minute, September fourth, twenty twenty-five, our motion. From Mr. Krasowski, thank you, and I have a second. Ms. LaRusso, one over here. Um. All in favor? Seeing there are no nades, passes. Approval of draft minute, September twenty-fourth. Just did that, swearing in as student board members, that's Reagan.
Reagan.
Zayn? What?
Reagan.
Reagan, exactly, right there. And we will have Evan Chen as well, so now you have the cards in front of you. You have your cards. We have Corey, we're gonna do this together. Okay. So. Reagan, you're first. Oh, we'll get that. The, uh. Subscribing one officer, that's gonna be. Ms. Foss, is that you? The officer on the side?
Yes.
Perfect, she's gonna do it, she's got that, you got this, you signed it, you signed it, you have you?
Yeah.
Perfect. Alright, this is where you get to do your thing, where you say.
We got stand up, I'm on stand up.
We'll do one at a time. No, sure, yes, one at a time, it'd be fun. Alright, ladies first. So, go ahead.
I, Reagan Zengla, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of student board member on the Board of Education for the Monticello Central School District, July first, twenty twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight, according to the best of my ability.
You got an alternate? Yeah, 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 Mr. Chen's next. Alright, so give you the same, thank you, right hand, raise your right hand. I.
I, Evan Chen, do solemn, solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of student board member on the Board of Education for the Monticello Central School District, July first, twenty twenty-five through July thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight, according to the best of my ability.
Too bad we don't have a thing. Yes. The flag?
Yep.
Soft that they fall. Okay, this is how you, you're there.
And then maybe Mr. Ross will allow a little.
Yep. It's gonna be late, it's gonna be late. Don't worry, I showered, you over here.
This way, one, two, thirty. Yes.
I'll send them just.
Oh, good, and I recommend something? Okay. We go back and when we do votes. Holy smoke, turn agenda to the table. Okay, adoption of agenda.
You know it's really cool?
Yeah.
There we go. Swearing in. We have the alternate, perfect. Thank you everybody for your patience. Uh, student board member update. Reggie, you doing it?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Is it on? Change it.
Chapter. The microphone.
Okay.
Very close. Hold on, is it green?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, so the first thing is the cell phone ban. Uh, for the most part, it's going very well, um, students seem to have more focus, um, and the enforcement of it is going smoother than we thought it would be. Um, food has been constantly improving and students have not been complaining about it, which is also very good. Um, high schools took the N W, N W E As for the first time. Fall sports are underway, more winning than losing this year, which is also nice. Uh, student council advisory has met with Ms. For already and were satisfied with their responses to their concerns. Some solutions were immediate such as, um, Tom, the laptops are operating. Um, and we are having a really good start to the school year.
Thank you. Now, we have. Okay. Hi Travis.
Thank you, President Groden, so good evening everyone, tonight, uh, we have a presentation from our curriculum directors and I'm going to turn this over to the Assistant Secretary for Curriculum Instruction to introduce them as well as their topic, Ms. Carla.
Good evening, everyone, thank you, Dr. Evans, so tonight, uh, we have our elementary uh, director, Keith Pettinger, and our secondary director, Laura Zamrusha. Uh, they are going to talk tonight about our twenty-five state assessment results along with our N W E A results. Um, so this is the spring previous, um, to this school year and they're gonna talk about some, uh, great things that we're doing this school year as well. Turn it over to you.
So, the first slide we're gonna get to is the comparison from the prior year to this year for, um, state assessments for New York State. So on the left is twenty-three, twenty-four, on the right is twenty-four, twenty-five. If you notice, we're seeing a shift from level ones to the level twos, twos to the threes, threes to the fours, it's gradual, but that's what you wanna see. Is the ones going down or twos and threes? And fours going up, so the right is twenty-five for ELAs.
So this slide, uh, and then just to reiterate, so level one means, uh, level ones and twos means the student's not proficient in state standards. Level three means they are proficient and then level four means they're, uh, self-level at the state standards. So this shows our ELA state test scores in grades three through eight. Um, and if you look at grades three, four, five, uh, you'll see over time, we're having, uh, less students in level one and more students in, uh, level four. And then the same thing with six, seven, and eight, gradually have fewer students level one, more students.
So this is our breakdown by student ethnicities in accordance with the board policy of how we have to disaggregate data when we present. Um, so you'll see the subgroup populations between, uh, black, white, and Hispanic and the proficiency levels across all of those subgroups.
And this slide shows, uh, how our students with disabilities have scored on a state test data compared to our general education students. The general education students are, is the graph on the left and students with disabilities, SWDs, students on my left.
So this is our English proficiency population, our English language learners, those are on the left and your non- Ls are on the right. Um, when we get to the math data, they can take the math data assessment in Spanish, so you'll see some different trends when we get to the math data of how our Ls are performing on the state assessment when they can take it in their native language.
This shows our economically disadvantaged students on the left and how they performed compared to the students who are not economically disadvantaged. Uh, this slide shows, um, students that met their growth projections on N W E A. So, uh, it goes from kindergarten, this slide is kindergarten, fifth grade, the next slide will show secondary. Uh, and then this does reflect the, the twenty-twenty norms. So the twenty-twenty-five norms, the normative data that N W A updated, um, our percentages would actually be slightly higher. Um, so if you look at this data, just, most of the numbers are slightly higher.
And then this is the secondary, N W A fall growth projections for six, seventh, and eighth. Um, and again, you can see the trend as they spend more time in that's the middle school, they're more likely to reach their growth projections.
So these two graphs, uh, the top one is how the students did in New York State overall, so overall on the ELA, how proficient they are from twenty eighteen all the way up to twenty twenty-five. And then the blue on the bottom is how we achieved at Monticello.
So now we're gonna switch over to math, kind of the same format we just did with English. Um, just a note that we do have it on the slides, our algebra students in eighth grade do not take the math state assessment. So those students are not included in the math state assessment, but we do have their algebra data and they do take the N W A. So they'll be in N W A data, but not the state assessment data. So as you can see, um, the trend again, level ones are going down and we're shifting to two, threes, and fours.
So this bar graph, uh, these bar graphs show, uh, grades three through eight and how they did in math. And if you look all the way to the right, that's how our eighth grade students actually did on the algebra regions. So the students that took the algebra regions did not, uh, take the eighth grade assessment, so, uh, just keep that in mind when they.
The total of students that encompasses is fifty-one, there are fifty-one students who sat for the algebra regions in grade. So this is again, the, uh, student ethnicities where you have black, white, and Hispanic, and comparisons of level one, two, three, and four of the math.
Uh, this shows us, uh, students with disabilities and general education students, very similar to ELA. General education students on the left, students with disabilities are on the right.
Um, and this is our English language learner population for math, they do have more students, um, getting proficiency. Again, that, they do get to take that in Spanish, so it might be a little easier for them to access the content and not struggle with the language barrier.
Uh, the sorry, economically disadvantaged students compared to the non-economically disadvantaged students and how they did on the math three, three, eight exam. And this shows, uh, K through five, the percentage of students on N W A that scored proficient on exams.
And this is your six, seventh, and eighth for math, and again, the trend is going up from sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade, which you want to grow both.
And similar to the ELA slide, so this mathematics slide, the numbers in orange reflect how New York State did on, on average for proficiency. And then, uh, the numbers in blue are the percentage of students that were proficient, uh, you can see that the trend is moving upwards.
So, shared a bunch of data with you, what does it mean and what are we doing with that? So we utilize this data to make the answer the next year coming up, so one of our focuses is MTSS, the Multi-Tier Systems of Support. So we're doing five progress monitor meetings, uh, every five weeks we meet to discuss students who are in tier two and tier three. What are we doing, is it working, is there more we need to be doing? Um, if we're seeing success in something, are we sharing that down into tier one as well because it is working? We're also making sure there's fidelity in following the MTSS plan, so that was finalized last year with different parameters, suggestions, strategies. That has been shared with every building, so we're making sure as directors, building administration, that we're really following that plan with fidelity, uh, one of the biggest things is the next thing is that utilization of the student support referral form. That lets us know when we don't have a student in tier two or tier three. A teacher can fill that out, so we can find out what we need to do for that student. It's not just academic, um, a student can be doing perfectly fine academically, but teachers are noticing something and they would like it addressed. So we review the form, we have a meeting, we discuss, and we provide the solutions or strategies to help support that student.
And stakeholders in MTSS meetings, so with our MTSS plan, we just want to make sure that we have a variety of stakeholders, including teachers, providers, uh, building representation, really on every level as part of the meeting, and making sure that's consistent with MTSS teams, strategy, school. Uh, for instructional walkthroughs, that's really done, uh, between tier one instruction to make sure more instruction, uh, is happening with fidelity from classroom to classroom, it's also been done for wind times to make sure best instructional practices are happening and also for us to look at and identify trends that, uh, we want to address through various professions above. And, uh, the last one is that just continuously meeting with building, district administration, meeting with building administration, making sure we're all on the same time, timeline, uh, constantly referring to progress monitor data, making sure we're looking at how our students are doing, how that's reflected in best practices and how it's reflected in our instruction overall.
So next are professional learning communities, um, so these slides are the big things that were encompassing to help grow our results, so they have these are built into the sample, that's to allow teachers that time to collaborate and prioritize standards. By prioritizing those standards, we'll align our instruction to what students need to know. Uh, that's not throwing out all the standards, it's just prioritizing what needs to happen first so we can make sure they have those foundational skills. The first one is October eighth. Uh, there's ongoing training and support from Bar Phillips Solution Tree, we have that support continually coming in, working with department chairs, grade level leaders, on aspects of prioritizing standards, all of these, um, pieces, and then.
Guiding Coalition, so we have elementary guiding coalition and the secondary guiding coalition. And what that is, is both our stakeholders that are really, uh, monitoring the, the change that we're doing as district in regards to PLC. So they're closely working with building administration, they're working with department leads, they're working with grade level leaders, and making sure that the message is being consistent across districts in regards to what we're doing with our standards work, how it's aligning with assessment, and how we're working towards, uh, becoming a fully functional, uh, PLC group. And the last slide, uh, the last bullet there is really just focusing more on, uh, making sure that our teachers are able to attend the PLC institute, so the majority of our principals and grade level leaders and department chairs, uh, attended two summers ago. Uh, the rest of the almost, all of them attended last summer and a couple more are going, uh, for the upcoming one in October. And the whole idea is that are attending workshops, they're hearing about what a PLC is, they're understanding best practices. Bring it back to the group, bring it back to the guiding coalition, we're really bringing that unity to make sure everyone's on the same page. Uh, and then for tier one instructional practices, so all of our students are receiving tier one, which is that, that for instruction. So for tier one, we want to make sure that, again, consistency is happening across the district, so the instructional playbook has put that common language for everybody to, to use, so that we're all talking about the same thing and there's no confusion from classroom to classroom or building to building. Uh, the instructional coaches did a phenomenal job putting that together, they worked with Bar, Bar Phillips, Great Global Consulting, to put it together, and Bar Phillips also has used that at our APPR trainings, so again, principals, building administrators, uh, everybody who's evaluated, teachers is all using that same language, uh, also for, for post-observation as well. Uh, coaching cycles are continuing, so that's with our instructional coach, they're continuing to work with new teachers or our tenured teachers, they're always referencing the instructional playbooks to again, bring that common language and see, and, uh, our monthly meetings with both the curriculum instruction team internally and also with the instructional coaches. Again, we're making sure that everyone's on the same page in regards to uh, PLC, in regards to the guiding coalition, what's being done at the building levels, and it's being done with instructional as well.
Um, throughout the summer and throughout the school year, we've gone on with professional development. Uh, throughout the year, uh, principals are integrating it into the faculty meetings, just quick, this, these are best practices for tier one to share. Um, they're utilizing in-house resources, if we have successful practices, we're making sure we're sharing those out. Um, so they get that throughout the year. And then we, um, also established a win calendar for the middle school, um, and that was to help support that intentional tier one instructional practices. So we, um, group the students and win to make sure they have like skills that we can work on, sometimes if these students have this strength, how can we keep increasing that? So there's a win calendar developed that has, uh, tier one instructional strategies that the teachers can access and have all the resources they need to support their students in those groups. Any questions?
Hi, thank you for all that. Um, just as you're going through things, one of the questions, and you, you talked about it a little bit at the very end there, is what to do with students who are achieving beyond and they, they get lost in the shuffle a lot because so much focus justified these going to kids who need to be raised up, you know, lift all boats. But you're gonna have kids that aren't really reflected in this because you don't see the, the amount of students in their exact grades, whether it's, wow, they're, they're not gonna have the park, look at what the school, this district is doing for these students. And, um, and so and that would be something interesting to know, is how many actual students get really high achieving grades and, and just to kind of build on that, what, what are they interested in? You typically see them in, in music and in sports and things like that, I just, I just, essentially, I just wanna know um, if at any point this coming school year, there can be, um, some focus on, uh, what can we do with the students who are achieving at a high level to get them a little bit more interested or, or that much further and incentivize it.
So I think we're, we're, some second speech to secondary, I think we're, we're getting there, especially with the win groups. Um, part of the data board that the teachers receive, one thing we're, we're shifting to this year. Um, they, I linked every single student's item analysis from the state assessment. So even if a student got a three, if the teacher has them in the win group, they can see what questions they missed. So we can still help them to achieve even higher. Um, and I've also broken down the RIC scores, so in N W E A, there is four skills sets. So even if a student gets, let's say, a two-twenty-two or a two-thirty, which is pretty good score. There's four categories in there and not always are all four of those categories gonna be the same score, so it allows the teacher to see the students achieving, but we can work on this area to help push them even higher, so I'm hoping that helps with that. We've, we've also increased the honors and, um, honors enrollment, again, we continually keep doing that. So I'm hoping that continues to push forward. The, the PLC questions are really gonna help shift the mindset this year too, so it's what do we need students to know, how do we know we learned it, that third question is the one we talk about a lot, what do we do when they don't know? But the fourth question is what do we do when they do know? So as our teacher teams are working this year in those half days, they have to address that fourth question. So what do we do with the students who already have it, it's not an extra worksheet, it's not help a buddy, it's what are we doing to enrich their education? So I think we'll start to see more of those opportunities using those four questions in the teams.
Yes, just to say, when there is a science fair here, you have kids that are sparked and you can see it, so, um, you know, just as something that I've seen be beneficial, I don't know if it would help to maybe have it closer to the beginning of school year because it gets that motor running and it's not just every day, I don't wanna say humdrum, but kids can get in a routine and, and just something to maybe spark their you know, flame their mind, get them passionate about learning. So, I, I know sometimes that happens outside of class, not just in the class. Sometimes it happens during library time or computer time or other times where other kids are working on the skills. But if you're doing IXL and you've, you've mastered these skills, maybe there could be something else where you're, okay, now you're gonna learn chess with your buddy that also has learned their skills, whatever it takes, but just, just trying to think about, because I know you guys are all saturated with what to do inside the classroom. And so my thought is maybe over time it can be something where uh, it'll be a little bit, um, you know, extruded in that and be more like things outside the classroom, thank you.
I've got a question, you got, you got one, go ahead. No, no, yeah, yeah, no.
Um, I just wanna echo what trustee Riley said, I also like the referral service. What you guys said, even if a child can be excellent academically, you see something off, I really like that. And I love the consistency across the whole entire district, so important. Um, and in-house resources using that, brilliant. Good job.
My question is, is that we have a discrepancy between the state what they're averaging and what we're averaging, thirty to forty points. If we're doing the same thing year after year, we're still lagging thirty to forty percent behind the state average, correct? If I'm, if I'm tracking what you're putting up on both slides. If we can't get it in-house, would it help to go out of house and find out what other districts who are achieving? Because all I see is we're railroad tracks, we'll go up, but we're still grossly below the state average. I think we can do it, um, is, is there alignment, I noticed your MTSS, so that's Ms. Carla. Do we have it where it's two parts, one is, do we have it where the teachers from fourth grade know what fifth grade is doing, fifth grade knows what sixth grade is, we're in that, and that they're teaching to that, they're gonna need this next year, you definitely need it with me now, fear me now, fear me later. The second part is, is do we have the statistics from state ed of what we're consistently missing? I mean, they give us elementary teacher, middle school, they give, state ed gives us two hundred hours or two hundred days worth of math for a hundred and eighty days worth of teaching. Not even counting snow days, so what is it that maybe we've been losing out on, like, is it, is it percentages at the end of the year and teachers cram into it and don't get there? Do we have a breakdown of what we've missed each year? And is it, and is it like a pattern that we've been missing?
So, I mean, you bring, you bring up a really great point, that if we keep doing the same thing every year, it's obviously not gonna work. Uh, the professional learning community, so really having that opportunity for our grades to not only meet, but our grades are meeting with the grades below and above them. And we're looking at the report, so the three-year trend report, which is one that we frequently use, uh, I gave it out a couple workshops over the summer, I know Bar Phillips has utilized it at our conference days last year. The three-year trend report shows exactly how our students are doing and they're doing it by standard. So then we can start to look at the standards and that's really a lot of the work we're gonna be doing at the half days this year, looking at the standards and saying, okay, are we seeing trends with standards that we're rocking and we can kind of, you know, take a step back a little bit and then focus more energy on ones that we're struggling.
And I think to your point too of, you know, two hundred days of work and a hundred and eighty days, that's why we're looking at that prioritizing standard, so this work will also be done to say, okay, these five standards, everybody has to master in order to be successful in the next grade level. And so before we go on to standards that are important, but may, maybe not a priority, we need to make sure these standards are, are accomplished first. So that's how we do that, because I think a lot of times we look at a program such as, you know, wonders and it's trying to get everything in without saying spend a little more time here, even if, you know, it takes you a little longer than you expected because we need to make to make sure every student knows this before we move on. They're used to just looking at a book and teaching that way, where now they're actually gonna dive into those standards and there'll be recommendations on what they absolutely need to cover, so we can hopefully accomplish that more in less time.
Yeah, it's, it's the working harder, uh, smarter, not harder. Not using a hammer to take down a tree, but a chainsaw, so I'd love to see if we, if somehow in your PLCs, is there a way that we can combine, alright, the last three years, the grade ahead of me has missed this, 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 can I prep my kids? And the same thing for the grade before you, you, you know what I'm talking about.
So one of the things I think that will help with that is we're, we're creating, um, a PLC classroom for the district, uh, I've been working with the tech department. So what it's gonna be is it'll have your contents and your grade levels and if you're a teacher at Chase in second grade, if you're at the high school in tenth grade, when you click on that, you'll be able to see K twelve prioritized standards, so you'll know what the grade before you prioritized. And we're also putting a resource page in there, so you can see the resources the teachers used, oh, the fifth grade team utilized this, that's helpful, so they'll have that landing page in that classroom to access, it's a, it's a work in progress. Uh, we're gonna build on it after each half day, so I think that will also help with the sharing of practices and consistency.
Awesome. Thank you. Go ahead.
I, I think just to follow up on that point, you know, a year from now after we, you know, or another year further along in the PLC implementation process. we'll be able to show these artifacts and this is what teachers use and utilize. And here's the P L C classroom page.
This is like actually the first year that they're actually putting this stuff into practice. So we're not going to really see them. Hopefully next year we'll see different numbers, but we have to give them an opportunity.
Yeah, the the half days here are so critical. I want to, you know, recognize the board for allowing, allowing that, the staff, the community's patience with us as we move through to that. But that's that's really impressive. I mean, the full day conferences too, but the half days are really needed this important.
And and I would like to, Laura worked with some volunteers yesterday around the guiding policy and around planning out those half days. And some of the comments were.
Yeah, so they we were collecting soundbites because we feel that's important evidence to share as we go through this because you need to know if it's working and the community as well. A lot of the soundbites were, we have time to do this work. We can engage in this work. Our department is buying in because we know we have this time to do it now. We are not going to be grading papers. We're going to be focusing on this. So everyone was just excited to have the time to dig in. It kind of eliminated an obstacle that sometimes this process and other implementation phases. But we've gotten a lot of high feedback from the teachers around that.
Go ahead, Ms. Riley. I got one last one.
Oh, sure. I was informed about a local school district, about maybe a half hour from here. So but they put a lot of effort into in the middle school to get the kids organized. So I know that we give kids planners, whatnot, but they make it. They put they lay on thick at the beginning to train them to be organized, to know what's helpful to put on their planner, what's, you know, what's clear out. And over time, it's made them more successful. It's as far as what this teacher has told me that they've seen it is they don't work there with their kids go to that school and they've seen the difference being a teacher and then having their kid go to that school. So I'm just just talking about this and kind of thinking about ways to improve students' course. Maybe in the future, to think on how to to drill into students at the beginning of school year especially and kind of hold their feet to the fire in that for the first month and see how that pushes them forward and get them more consistent and expectation. So expectation would be, because I know that you sometimes it's check your planner and you get a point for participation for having your planner written in and everything like that. But over time, it gets lost in the shuffle. And I think that if a kid has a setback, if they don't have that support outside of the teachers, it's hard for them to maybe have their their book bag cleaned out and it's just a vicious cycle. So.
And I think the so incorporating that win calendar, that win activities aren't all academic. We incorporate things like that, like they're in October, they're going to do a learning style in Victoria. Because students sometimes don't even know how they like to learn.
Right.
So they can't express what they need in a classroom. So we're going to pull pieces like that in and we're going to use real-time data from the teachers. So what are you seeing as a problem? All the kids are born in Victoria's early this month. Okay, so we need to do a couple of win lessons around what being on Chinese and what that looks like. The freshman seminar is also working on that with the freshmen because it's a big leap from eighth grade to high school. So there works on a lot of those skills as well with the students. So progress on perfection, but I I hear your point and hopefully we'll make some improvement on that.
Thank you.
All right, so my my last one is that my former work wife, every year beat the region and beat the state average. She had a do now. And it's not the this, I will definitely go that the kids need to have a spark. That's great. If they don't keep using the spark, if the teacher hits, you're talking about five different things, let's say, argument sake, that you don't teach them in isolation, that what she did was every do now at the beginning of class was circular and it's like, we'll go here, we'll go one, I'll teach you this in the beginning, two in November. But now I'm coming back and I'm still giving you stuff from one. Don't, because if the kids don't use it, I'm going to have to quote Ms. Yovo from tenth grade in the high school myself. Practica, practica, practica. If you don't practice it, if you just use it in isolation, the kids aren't going to get it. But if they can keep spiraling through the year, each time it's more work. But it is so well worth it for the students because they're not going into the state test cold. Because it's what, March, April, right? We don't even get to teach them enough per se. So it's the what I we found is, and and also I had with the election, she did, she killed it in math. Like they needed another computer to see the results. Is that's good. It's taking the skills, but not in keeping him in isolation. I don't know if you can use that in P L C, but that's it. Any other questions about it? No?
I heard it spiraling curriculum before. That's what's called.
Yeah, 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 I know you were.
Yeah, spiraling.
Thank you. What did you just say? It's power. He just lost it. Yeah, that's right. Yeah. Oh, okay. You said a motion and I was working. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we can. Take a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Emotion.
Thank you. Mr. Cologne, second by Ms. LaRue.
Yes. Rusev. And now.
And. They have motion to approve the consent agenda.
Items F one.
Items F one.
F one.
F one.
Two through K. No. M one.
M one. Okay. Motion to approve from F one to M one. By trustee Guzinski, thank you. You have a second? Terrific, Ms. Riley. Uh, all favors? Okay. Next. We have board roundtable. Trustee Guzinski, you want to start?
Absolutely. I've attended every Monticello J V and varsity volleyball game since the season has started in person or from my computer on live streams from the Germany pavilion in Epcot. And they have been doing wonderful. Both teams have been successful. Varsity started off three and O for the season and J V is, I believe, four and one.
Terrific.
That's it.
Trustee Riley?
I've been attending, medicating ball ball and ASO soccer, basically. I did catch one Monticello varsity soccer game, but I only was able to see about a half hour of it. And there was a couple of students in the audience here that played valiantly. I saw them in the parking lot, but yeah, parents are out and it's been great in the community.
Thank you. Trustee Stotler?
I have been actively following our high school cross-country team. Have enjoyed meets in Warwick and Cornwall both, where our kids have done a really good job and was very proud of them. Okay, so that's it.
Trustee Cologne? Any report?
No.
Okay, nothing to report.
Nothing to report.
Glad to be seeing you guys. We have trustees, go ahead.
I have attended some ASO games. I've collected a beautiful bundle of vandalines. I love watching the little ones play. This past Monday was the meeting for the Sullivan County School Association, which I did not attend. Please make sure that you guys are R C P for the dinner by tomorrow, pre-temory tomorrow. I loved seeing on the Facebook page for the pre-K and elementary going on the Constitution Day. It was beautiful to see all that, loved it. And there was a code of conduct meeting, which I did not make. Trustee Jersey did, but she is not here to give a update on that. The Hall of Distinction, I unfortunately did not make. I'm sorry, Dr. Evans, I was not there. Tomorrow at six P M. At the Rock Hill Bar House, there will be an open house for Cub Scouts for PAC one oh one, which is away, so boys and girls. Girls now are eligible to become Eagle Scouts, which is pretty exciting if you have girls. That's six P M. At the Rock Hill Bar. Remember, I have.
Thank you. Uh, the I am so excited to see, so excited to see turf. I cannot wait for the spring. Not trying to kill the false words, but my goodness, this stadium. Have you seen it? We're gonna. Kudos to our athletic director for keeping our hype up and keeping the spirit alive. If you notice, as you drive up to the high school, you see the banter clause. It's terrifying to others visiting schools. That's why I like. So that touring my alma mater here today at five thirty, the walkthrough was terrific to see the improvements, the better floor.
New floor.
New flooring, cabinetry, safety that we have here without the windows that were, I remember when I was here. It is, there are more secure classrooms. There is more room. I am very encouraged by what changes that are coming on at Chase and these other elementary schools as well. So that's it for my report. We have. We've got policy committee, no, we did administrative reports. Stocker. Ooh, nice one. Do we have questions from the public?
No, no, not yet. Head to is the directors. The perfect reports.
I put my name by address.
Yes, no, 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 we're going to get it. We are, you're not being skipped at all. Okay. No, no, thank you.
The director's reports.
Um, okay, director's reports. Any questions about that?
I would just like to say that I love seeing the pictures of the directors that are in the reports.
Duly noted. Love seeing the pictures. Policy committee, we said we have trustee Jersey not here.
Oh, I got, okay. I'll be good. Thank you, President Broden. So tonight, the board will be doing first readings of revisions to five different policies. Four of them are very connected. Fifty-five hundred student records, fifty-five hundred R, the regulation on student records, eighty-six thirty-five, which is information and data privacy, security breach and notification. And then eighty-six thirty-five R, the regulation that accompanies that. These are all coming from the New York, recommendations from the New York State School Boards Association and are updates particularly to align these four policies with each other, but also with Education Law two D, which protects student privacy. So the policy committee reviewed these. They moved them forward unanimously, but really it updates them and kind of modernizes them with all of the new software and everything else that we we subscribe to that student data gets utilized in. So that's those four policies. And then the board is also conducting a first reading of the wellness policy, policy fifty-four zero five. This comes to us from recommendations from the Wellness Committee that was chaired by the Director of Physical Education, Athletics and the Health and Wellness, Mr. Jasper. He had a stakeholder committee, I think Ms. LaRusso was on that committee. Was anyone else on that committee? Ms. Riley?
Last year.
Last, yeah, last year. He presented at the last policy committee meeting and you see changes, some changes there as well. So those are first reads tonight. As we get into the action items, if you have questions on those. I will also add that the next policy committee meeting will be before the next board meeting, which is October ninth. And the policy committee had put forward suggested changes to the student fundraising policy. After reviewing it with our legal counsel, he advised that there are, you know, a number of flaws in it that are not consistent with New York State Education Department regulations and recommended that we utilize the New York State School Boards Association based policy. Consider that and then potentially make some changes and adjustments off that rather than trying to reconfigure the current fundraising policy, which has, the policy committee has already noted flaws in it. But more than that, there's some real inconsistencies with commissioners' regulations that need to be addressed. So that will be coming back to the policy committee on October ninth.
Thank you.
The correspondence outcomes, capital project update.
Thank you, President Broden. So as was mentioned before, there's been a lot of progress, near completions on classrooms at Cook Elementary School and here at Chase Elementary School. Right now, our architects and construction managers are drafting punch lists for the classrooms at Cook and the classrooms at Chase. Obviously, we know that the sinks and some of the countertops have not been installed yet. We know that some of the terrazzo floor hasn't been replaced yet at Cook and some of the valances around some of the cabinetry, both here at Chase and at Cook. The athletic field continues to progress. The surface of the track is now fully installed and now they'll be topping it off with the top layer and then adding lines to it. And fencing has now gone in around the the track as well. So that phase of that project is nearing completion. And then next up, in the winter, they'll start breaking ground and pouring concrete for the the stadium and the and the field house. So some very exciting times. Our next owners' meeting is next week on September twenty-fifth. I'll have more and more detailed update for the board at that time. Ms. LaRusso?
They can pour concrete in the winter?
I was just going to get out of my head. I'm like.
Major conversation in my house.
Parts, some, depending on the temperature, yes. But there are some days when they will not be able to. But they're going to start breaking ground now and I think they're going to watch the weather and then make some decisions about when to pour and when not to pour. The calendar right now, and I'll probably have a more up-to-date calendar for you at the next meeting, is that that a stadium will be done by late spring. We are still on track, fingers crossed, for a June twenty-sixth graduation on the field. But in all likelihood, the press box and like the concession stands will not be done. So what will probably happen is right now, the plan is just to have kind of a walkthrough, but people can sit in the stands and we can have the graduates on the field. That's what we're angling for right now. Okay.
That's great. It's awesome.
Yes, but you will have a more detailed calendar at the next meeting.
Thank you.
All right, next one. Upcoming events. We have community events. Well, okay, go ahead.
No, there's some upcoming events there in the calendar. One item in particular I want to call the board's attention to is next week, September twenty-fourth. Sullivan one eighty is hosting an Empowering a Healthier Generation Celebration at Bethel Woods. We have some of our students, Mr. Lucky and Mr. Jasper, who will be presenting on the Spartan Club. I believe an invite was sent around to the board back in August. Do you know, Ms. Boss, when that starts? I can look at my calendar too.
I am not sure. I can read send it again tomorrow.
It's on September twenty-fourth. The board is obviously invited. It looks like it begins at three thirty at Bethel Woods. Yep. And then there's other events listed as well.
Now we're questioning the comments from the public.
There's also, right? Yeah, no, there's one more thing in there. Community events.
Okay. Community events, not anybody, anybody at.
It's my dream.
We're now jinxing. Question in the comments for the public. Do we have any comments for the public?
Yes, we do.
So you need to read.
There is that. Yes. Before we do, I have to read this, if you don't mind. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and matters of public interest in order to permit the fair and orderly expression of public comment. Following rule shall govern and be administered by the please note that if you wish to speak, place your name and email. You have telephone number on the sign list indicating prior to making your comment, state your name for the record, identify any group or organization you represent. Comments are limited to three minutes or less per speaker. A speaker may not yield his time to another speaker in order to extend time for comments. No speaker may comment on or identify any particular student or employee by name, position, or situation in their comments. All comments are to be directed to the board president, pro temp, or designate. Handouts and our positions are to be given only to the board president for distribution to the board. The board will receive and consider all written comments. A memo will be placed on the agenda for the next meeting under information, reports, and discussions to keep the board informed of the outcomes. It'll be titled correspondence outcomes and via public document. Thank you. So. It's really cool because I clicked on it. What I think that. Who do we have as boss?
We have Susan Purcell.
Ms. Purcell, if you would. Welcome back.
Thank you. Good evening. Many of you know who I am. And for those of you that do not, let me introduce myself. My name is Susan Purcell, a former nine-year member of the Monticello District Board of Education, where I served four years as board president. I am also a head of three of. I am also a parent of three adults orders who attended this elementary school, and I am also a taxpayer in this school district. The reason I decided to speak tonight is to ask for answers to many questions I have regarding the following. I came to be aware of a bus accident that occurred last week, I believe on Wednesday, December tenth, involving students being transported home. From this school to their homes in Yankee Lake. One of those students is a kindergarten student here at Chase, a child of a family, four neighbors of mine. These parents of her, who only months before communicated to me they were nervous and apprehensive about his start to the school year. And I assured these parents how wonderful the M H A school is, having had an amazing experience here as a parent. When my three daughters attended this school many years ago, my oldest is thirty-eight years old. And they also attended the Middleland High School, which I truly believe was a foundation to their success for their college and career path. And I would be remiss to not recognize, not by name, but the many people that are in this audience who are former staff members and present. That were helpful in that foundation in Middleland High School for my daughters to take advantage of all that is good here. And be successful, I can't say enough, thank you. I was informed by this parent last Saturday. Of the delay in the communication to her regarding this accident, only through social media did she find out her son was on this school bus. Her son thankfully arrived home safely on a replacement bus. It was an hour and a half later that the communication arrived to her about the accident. And her son was stepping off the replacement bus. My question is why, all of you are parents, you have had children, you don't have to answer me, you're not supposed to. But how terrifying to know your son was in a school accident on a bus and knew nothing about where they should be. Should they part of the school, should they come to the accident scene, should they stay put? So for further communication to come through. So they knew their children were safe, who was at the scene assessing them, I can't even imagine as a parent how frightening that was. I was also to learn that at kindergarten kickoff, this parent questioned where the school bus was for her son to. Ride on the school bus, had the opportunity to understand his expectation for behavior on the school bus. And also for parents to ask questions, the staff member informed this parent they forgot to make sure the bus was here. My question is why? I was also informed by this parent, an orientation, there was no formal itinerary for discussion, and a staff member. As a staff member asked.
Past president, I appreciate you so much, those were the three minutes.
I would like to ask the board if I could have more, this is really boring, I would ask the board to allow me, I tie myself.
I I know, I know you did, but we have three timers going right now and we've gone past that by ten.
One more minute, I asked the board to amend it. Please, I asked.
I I appreciate it, right now it's our policy, this is what we have, that I outlined it, I know you practiced, it it went longer.
I would ask, and I have as board president, that amending the agenda allows them to speak a little bit longer as board president, to get information that was important, I ask again, can I have more on?
I I can't amend policy as. We have, we have another. Comment section.
At the end of the meeting?
Yes, yes.
That I can continue.
You could continue that with three minutes, I'm looking to make sure we fit everybody in.
I understand, thank you.
No, thank you, um Ms. Boss, do we have another one?
No, we do not.
We do not, okay, um with that, uh section O, New York State, BOCs and other superintendent updates, Dr. Evans?
Thank you, President Groden, so tonight I want to recognize. Uh a member of our faculty who has just been awarded tenure as a counselor in our district, Ms. Hannah Powers, congratulations, Ms. Powers. Much deserved, well done, I also want to welcome, I don't know if he's here tonight or not, a new faculty member uh at uh Rutherford Elementary School. Vincent Emanuel, Mr. Emanuel, are you here? And I think I see him, are he's a new special education teacher at Rutherford. So some other updates, uh the uh, I shared with the board a report that the House of Representatives Appropriations Committee. Has forwarded a bill uh onto the floor of the House, uh that proposes a twenty-seven percent reduction in Title One funding. For the twenty-two-six, twenty-seven school year. Uh this current year, we expect to receive approximately one point nine eight million dollars in Title One funding. Twenty-seven percent reduction, if it were to go through, would be approximately five hundred thirty-four thousand and six hundred dollars. This would cause significant cuts in programs uh that are currently funded by Title One, which is primarily for economically disadvantaged students and other at-risk students. Uh the New York State School Boards Association has emailed its members about steps it's taking and urging. Uh interested uh board members and others to contact their federal representatives. I want to welcome uh Reagan and Evan to the board and uh thank you for being here. And uh just to uh review Reagan's comments about the cell phone ban, uh that's generally been the uh, I'll say the consensus among. Our staff and administrators about how it's going, uh we do not have hard data yet on, they'll say the number of fractions of the the cell phone ban. However, it has been generally, and it's like, if not surprisingly positive, students have been very cooperative with the ban. Uh when I've been visiting schools and classrooms, I have not seen any student with a cell phone out, I've seen yonder pouches. Um and that's a great thing, I haven't seen staff in the back and forth with students, not saying they're not there, they may be there somewhere, but they're, they're really not out. Present, and I want to thank and recognize all of our staff, all of our students. And our parents and caregivers at home, who I'm I'm sure probably are having some difficult discussions now and then about why. Kids can't have their cell phones at school, so I recognize uh that this was a pretty heavy lift, but I want to thank everyone for for their cooperation up to this point. Uh yesterday I attended a roundtable on workforce housing development, uh that was held at Resource World and facilitated by Assembly Member. Paula Kay, um it's very helpful for me to be at a table and to dialogue with other county, town. Uh state leaders as well as developers about uh potential plans for workforce affordable workforce housing in the county. I've also begun uh visiting classrooms and schools and uh eating lunches in our cafeterias, I had. Uh my first lunch at the uh high school cafeteria a couple of weeks ago, and then earlier this week at the middle school. Uh they've been very good, uh they've been very accommodating, uh I've been uh sharing feedback with them, uh with Ms. Phelan. And with Ms. Carlin about my classroom visits, and I'm also very pleased to share that, I believe earlier today, uh Ms. Zanrusia and Ms. Gore. Finalized, finalized, almost finalized?
We are waiting for the Sooty Sullivan's at the at the application, we just need it more formalized and writing, we can't send an email. But they are. Good to go.
We're, we're nearing uh submission for career and technical education, I guess accreditation or applications. For businesses and marketing, business and marketing, should be business marketing, excuse me, and hospitality and tourism programs in our high school. Uh so that's utilizing current staff, maybe some course adjustments here or there. Um so that students can attend coursework at Montello High School in those areas and receive C T E credits for them. Uh we're partnering with Sooty Sullivan to do that, uh and that application deadline is October first. Uh we expect after that to probably have some back and forth with state that about those applications, uh but this is a very exciting development, I want to thank Ms. Gore. Ms. Zanrusia and the teachers and those departments for their their hard work at getting this, these applications together, thank you. And also just for the board's uh information, there are uh. Uh enrollment numbers that came out, uh we do this at the start of the school year, at the next board meeting you'll have fence information numbers. Uh and I will say just uh for some of the questions that were raised by Ms. Purcell relative uh to the bus accident. Uh I know that uh school and district staff responded promptly. Uh emergency medical crews responded more promptly, and we're at the scene before our school staff would get there. Uh and uh those students required immediate medical attention or were transported. Uh and I want to thank and recognize our staff's prompt response, uh they did put student safety at the forefront. Uh Mr. Brandino responded promptly with a nurse, the school resource officer, worked with the transportation staff as well. Uh and uh he did share with his uh the parents of Chase Elementary School on Monday how that went. Uh we did a post incident review, identified some areas to improve uh the communication uh gaps. Uh and uh we expect improvements next time, but there was a clerical error in sending out that parent square message. And uh if the board wants a copy of that letter, I can refer it back to you, but he did send that out to a parent square message earlier this week. But again, uh very thankful for uh the actions of our transportation staff, our school staff. And the emergency responders at the scene, and it wasn't our credit as well, paying car pulled out in front. Any questions to my report? Any questions?
Did the robo call go out, was it just the parents square no education of this accident?
I believe the initial one was just the parents square no education.
So there was no robo call?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that, the question.
Question was, was there a robo call that went out? With parents square? All right, um Assistant Superintendent for Business Update Information, correct? Yes.
Thank you, trustee Groden, um this evening I only have two items, the first is a resolution to amend the award to Candela's Plumbing that was for this stadium. There was a transposition error on in a previous resolution, it said four hundred and thirty-six thousand five hundred dollars, it should have said four hundred and sixty-three. Three thousand five hundred dollars, I'm asking the board to uh correct that award. And I'm asking the board to approve the transportation contract extensions for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, these. Are contracts that were all bid two years ago, um you can extend up to five years. So um we'll be extending for next couple of years and then we'll do another bid. That's it, any questions, it's went off, I'm sorry.
No questions? Okay, um.
Yes, that's my.
Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction.
Thank you, President Groden, and good evening, everyone, uh I don't have anything uh formally to ask you to approve tonight. Our contracts are just starting to be worked on, especially with our private school, so you'll start seeing those uh next meeting. Things, I do want to mention, um it was brought up at the last board meeting, I believe by trustee LaRusso. Um in for, asking for information about our individual um attendance procedures in our buildings. Um we are working on that with our principals and they are going to present those to uh to us at the principals directors meeting next week. And we should have more information for you at the next board meeting. And that is all I have.
Thank you, we have um. Any discussion for any of the action items, T one through T seven? Does anybody want to remove any? Seeing as there's no hands in the air, that's great, do I have a motion to approve action items, nope?
Motion to take.
Motion to take them as a group, T one through T seven. Oh, I need to scroll, my bad, any, do I have a motion to take as a group, action items, T one through T nine? When I scroll deeper, thank you, Ms. LaRusso, do I have a second, Ms. Riley, thank you, then? Vote, all in favor? Everybody's up, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve items, T one through T nine? Sorry, I'll get it, all right, do I have a second, Ms. Stotler, I saw your hand up, thank you. All in favor? Terrific, that's great, correspondence.
Uh there's nothing there, there's nothing there.
Nothing there, terrific. Questions and comments from the public, do we have a, I think we have.
That's a continuation from Suzanne Purcell.
Thank you, Ms. Purcell, to continue, please.
So to try to speak as fast as I can.
I'll listen.
Okay, where I thought of this, I was also informed by this parent, an orientation, there was no formal itinerary. The staff member asked parents for questions and thanked her for her many questions because he forgot, it was like general orientation.
Hold on, hold on, you can't, you can't identify.
I, I'm sorry, they, I'm sorry, I missed.
You're, you're still referring to a staff.
We can't, we can't.
Not mentioning that my name is a staff member, do you know how many staff members are in this district?
It's a real pickle, we can't do by situation, I said that.
You're referring a particular staff member, that's.
Uh, excuse me?
You are implying.
Same as staff member, I conducted orientations, I do not. That answer, I was also informed by this parent that she was notified before the start of the school year that her son would have to tend to the Cook School. For services he was to be provided.
We can't do a particular student, we can't do identifying.
Student, I'm saying a.
A particular, a particular situation.
Please, please, Ms. Purcell.
Okay.
Four years, you know.
I will continue because I know the clock is ticking. I'm well aware as a former board member of this board, the protocols and procedures to be followed in the event of an accident and other situation regarding communication to parents. They deserve no less, this failure is unacceptable in the communication system, which I was told was called parent square. Where was the backup in order to get communication to the parents? There's also a perception that more monies are allocated for projects than other elementary schools than the Chase School. I am well aware how funds are distributed, the process to allocate monies and projects to schools. However, perception is also people's reality, I ask that perhaps not this evening, but communication for a clear understanding of these processes be provided. For the purpose of transparency and fairness, not just when you want the budget to be passed, and not when you want to be elected to your board seats. It is my hope that clear answers to my questions could be provided, I want to be reassured that this parent have answers. And at the very best, I believe, parents should have meeting, uh this parent should have a meeting with the superintendent for other concerns I have not mentioned tonight. I think the situation is beyond the chain of command, it is my hope that she can be reassured and trust her son. Will have an amazing experience, as I mentioned to her, that my children have here in the school district, and she will truly trust over time, that will be the case. I have always said, if you know better, do better, and I think you need to do a lot better, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Purcell, appreciate that. We will have, somebody from the district will contact you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
And your past presidency.
Know how it works, thank you.
Okay, um those are questions and comments, do I have a motion for adjournment? By Ms. LaRusso, do I have a second? Ms. Riley, thank you. All in favor?